Item B.
Item 6B, wave first reading and introduce an ordinance regarding amendments to San Bruno Municipal Code, Chapter 7.18, residential permit parking.
City manager.
Sure. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council and members of the public. We will be presenting a item to adopt a residential parking program guidelines, wave first reading, and introduce an ordinance regarding amendments to the San Bruno Municipal Code, Section 7.18, related to residential permit parking. I'll first say that there'll be a number of people that will participate in tonight's presentation, myself, city attorney Mark Zaffarano, police chief Ed Barberini, and Jimmy Tan, our Public Works director. And development of these guidelines has really been a interdepartmental effort of staff throughout the city. And so our agenda for tonight is to ... Who is the clicker? Our agenda for tonight, we'll give a little bit about the background. We will talk about the establishment of the parking program and some of the program policy. We will review the approval process for the permit parking program. We'll go into a little bit of detail about the amendments that are needed to the municipal code. We will talk about parking enforcement. And the last time we were before council, council wanted some information on estimated annual program costs, so we'll talk about that and then we'll end with the recommendation. So just really quickly on background, as the city council and the public knows, parking has been a longstanding issue in a number of residential neighborhoods, not just east of El Camino, but also throughout the community in a number of other areas. And the issue is multi-pronged. There is not one solution that will solve the problem, and staff really has been working on a multi-pronged effort. And the residential parking program is just one potential solution should residents decide to adopt permit parking that would help alleviate some of the non-residential parkers in the community. And so the city council took steps to examine the feasibility. So that process started in 2018 where there was a joint parking committee, subcommittee established. There were two members of the city council, two members of the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee that looked at it, and staff provided a number of recommendations that really, one of the key things that the subcommittee talked about in that was, we heard resoundingly from the community through that process, is look into a residential parking program, look into a residential parking program. We heard that again at the Parking Town Hall that we held here at the senior center in January. The city staff committed to go back and put the guidelines together and then return to the city council. That occurred in July 2019, just last month, when we had a study session that talked about the program guidelines. And council provided direction to staff, and we are here tonight to respond to council's request and to once again go over the guidelines. And so it's important to talk about the key components in the policy decisions that are before council. So a residential parking program can really be done two ways, voluntary opt-in or mandated. Our recommendation that we presented to council last month was for a voluntary opt-in program that's available citywide. The enforcement window is geared toward nighttime parking, so I should actually call that evening and nighttime parking. So the enforcement window is proposed to be 6:00 PM to 9:00 AM, and that would be for permitted residents and visitors only. One of the things that we talked about at the study session that I should highlight really briefly is that the typical residential parking program is actually geared toward the outsiders that park in an area. So you mainly see residential parking programs around transportation hubs, be it a barge station or a Caltrain station or downtown. However, that's not the core of the problem that we're trying to address. What we're trying to address is the core problem that we heard from the residents, which is when we come home in the evening time, there's not enough parking stalls available. There are too many cars that are parked on the street that appear to be used for storage. And there are people that we think that do not live in our neighborhood that are parking in our residential area. And so the enforcement window is, again, geared towards those nighttime hours, but all of the guidelines really are particularly focused on trying to address the problem that we're trying to impact, which is to hopefully provide a little bit more parking in the residential neighborhoods for the residents that live in that area. On the quantity of the permits, we are recommending two permits per dwelling unit. The cost of the permit, based on council feedback, would be free for the first permit and $50 for each, for the second permit each year. Visitor caregiver or guest parking, there would be a limit of six guest passes per month at a rate of $5 for a day pass and $50 for a week pass. We talked extensively about that at the study session, and the council felt very strongly that there should be a higher amount for the weekly parking rate, but a lower amount for the daily parking rate should residents have guests that they want to come over and park in the neighborhood, that that should be at a lower rate. And so you have that proposed here. And there would be parking exemptions on holidays. It's also worth mentioning that at the prior meeting, it was asked, what happens if there is someone that has a more permanent caregiver or a need for some medical need or an ADA need? There is a exemption process where they can petition the city and receive an exemption, so potentially that resident could have more than two parking passes should there be a need for that. And so we will now go through a quick highlight of the steps for the voluntary opt-in process. This is exactly the same as was presented in July, but there may be members of the public where this is their first time seeing it, so we will take time to step through.
Great. Thank you. So this slide shows the process for implementing the residential permit parking program. And as the city manager mentioned, this was presented to the city council study session last month, and the requirements within these processes are similar to what other agencies are doing as well. So we can start with the upper left-hand corner as step one, where resident or neighborhood sponsor will submit an application to the city, Public Works Department, and the application includes questions in regards to, you know, what the nature of the overflow parking problems are within that neighborhood, how often does it occur, whether, you know, they can identify any parking impact generators that's causing the overflow parking issues, describing how this residential parking permit district will eliminate or reduce the parking impacts. And staff currently is proposing a minimum of three contiguous blocks in any orientation and must include both sides of the street. So the resident or sponsor would have to propose those three blocks within the application. And for step two, the staff from Public Works will review the applications to determine whether it meets the criteria. And if it does, then we will notify the resident to submit a petition to establish a permit parking district. And the petition form is included in the staff report as well, and it contains information regarding the neighborhood's facilitator and sponsors with their names, address, and phone numbers that we're requiring and the signatures as well. So as part of the petition process, we are requiring a response rate of 50% plus one of the dwelling units in the proposed district. And each one adult signature within each dwelling unit should be, you know, the one that's signing the petition for the district to be considered. And so we are not including any accessory dwelling units or ADUs. We're not considering that as a purpose of the petition. For step four, if the review of the petition determines that it's complete and complies with the submitted requirements, then we will continue to the next step. If it doesn't, then we would submit a letter back to the neighborhood sponsor denying the request. And currently, as the city manager mentioned, we're not issuing more than the two permits per dwelling units. And however, you know, if the city believes that, you know, the area may, you know, increase the potential number of parking spaces, we may go back and conduct some parking inventory study to determine if it's possible to increase the parking permits in the area. But by limited number of permits, it will help ensure that the permit holders are able to find parking on the on-street spaces. For step five, as mentioned, the survey, the survey will be mailed, you know, to the dwelling units within the proposed district, and one signature will be counted. So this is a survey that the city is conducting on behalf of, to the resident, and the residents must return the surveys. A minimum of 50% of the surveys must be returned to the Public Works Department within a designated timeframe, and 67% of those returned surveys must support the establishment of the permit district. So in order for the process to continue, so if the survey meets those requirements, the Public Works director or designated would draft and mail a letter to the residents within the proposed district to let them know about the results. If the returned surveys do not meet the requirements, then we will also send a letter denying the request. So there will be a one-year moratorium on new requests for, you know, permit parking, which will take effect for all the streets that are proposed, which we've denied if it doesn't meet the requirements. But the resident may, you know, submit an appeal of the denied request to Public Works Department within 30 days of receiving the notice, and appeals will be heard by city council, you know, per the municipal code. If, for step six, if the survey meets the requirements and the Public Works director or the designated will prepare a staff report and come to council for consideration to designate the parking district, and we will have a resolution that includes the petition results, the results of the parking inventory study if we conduct one, and the residential permit district location and restriction hours and so forth, if there's any changes to what was originally proposed. And for step seven, once the council approves the parking district, staff from the Public Works Department will notify the residents in regards to the date when the district enforcement will begin and how to purchase the parking permits. And if the city council denies the request, there will be one-year moratorium as well on new requests for these streets involved in the denied area.
Thanks, Jimmy, and also to the city manager. So I just want to spend a moment talking through some of the main changes to the ordinance that authorizes the permit parking program that we're proposing for you tonight. So the first question is, well, why are we proposing changes to the ordinance in the first place? And the answer is because the ordinance was really designed to address a different situation. That situation was parking around the Bard and Caltrain station, which is not necessarily what we're talking about to resolve these issues. So the goal in amending the ordinance is to make sure that it's sufficiently flexible so that it can meet the needs of the residents and the city council as we go forward and evaluate the applications for a parking program that might come in. So for example, one of the things we did is recognize right at the beginning of the ordinance that it's not only external parking generators that can cause a problem, but other possible parking sources. And so that addresses the situation, for example, that the city manager talked about, where maybe there are residents who own too many cars in the neighborhood or other factors. And so we wanted to make sure the ordinance was sufficiently flexible. The other thing we wanted to do, and the other main goal, was to make sure that the city council could respond more quickly to a desire to change the standards in the guidelines. And as you'll see, you have in front of you a resolution to adopt the program. And what we wanted to do is to make it so that you didn't have to come back and amend the ordinance formally if there's a tweak or a change that you want to make to the program based on the information that you get or based on what the applications are that come in. So what we've done is defaulted everything we can from the ordinance and said, the city council is authorized to adopt a residential permit parking program and guidelines, and those are done by resolution. So if you want to change those, you can come back and, in theory, at one meeting or more if you need, but you don't need two separate meetings, you don't need introduction, adoption of a resolution, and so on. So we've tried to make it easier for the city council to respond more quickly. We've made a couple of other changes. The police department recommended that we talk about not only physical displays for the permit, but also make an allowance if there is an electronic display, for example, a way for the permit to be gotten not only online, but also to be triggered and evaluated electronically. So a permit isn't just what you display, but display includes an electronic display. And then finally, we made some minor wording changes so that the ordinance is now consistent with all of the guidelines. And if you change the guidelines, you don't necessarily have to go back and change the ordinance. So that was the goal of what we did. And with that, I'll pause, and if anyone doesn't, if there aren't any questions, then staff can continue with the remainder of the presentation.
Good evening. The municipal code requires that the police department not only enforce parking permits, but also manage a parking permit program. And I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the management and enforcement aspects of a residential parking permit program. It's a little bit of an exercise of putting the cart before the horse because we don't know the scope or the volume of permit areas that we would be asked to both manage and enforce. So not knowing that, we can give you some ballpark information about what we think or what we may forecast should this type of effort gain some traction. Personnel and equipment needs are probably, are by far going to be our most costly expense in trying to manage and enforce any type of residential parking permit program. If we go down, or when we go down this road and it seems to work, and if it's only a couple blocks here or there, there may be a situation where we can absorb those enforcement and management requirements with existing staff. However, if we see robust or large areas that are granted, their permit applications are approved and granted, the proximity of where those neighborhoods are to one another, all of those variables may pose some challenges from both a management and an enforcement perspective. What you see up on the screen there as far as numbers will probably look familiar. It's the same figures that you were provided with at the July study session. They include the additional, the addition of one full-time community service officer should we have a large area or multiple areas that are granted this permit program. It may require an additional staff member to conduct enforcement. The additional police clerk is one that is often overlooked, but the management component of this, should it be of any significant size, may require some administrative support internally at the police department. And then there's some logistical and equipment needs such as a vehicle and software to manage the program, which are listed there as well. An analysis of this program with other cities and communicating with other cities, we've learned that we cannot expect to recoup or a substantial amount of costs of the management and enforcement of this program. It certainly doesn't pay for itself, is what we've learned from our neighbors and from the others in the Bay Area who've gone down this road. And from an enforcement perspective, I know that the general sense of when we're trying to address a problem that exists during a particular time of day. And we're trying to accommodate residents who, when they come home from work, have a place to park in proximity of where they live and it's in some level of convenience. Therefore, we anticipate that the parking permit hours would be granted during the evening hours, so we're prepared to enforce those permits proactively in the evening hours. But we would anticipate that the parking permit requirement may be an overnight timeframe. And while we would proactively enforce those into the evening hours, that enforcement would not include the whole evening. For example, we wouldn't have parking enforcement officers out at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning enforcing permit parking regulations even though there may be signage in the permit program, may call for permits at that time of the early morning or late evening. Those enforcement efforts would be dealt with on a complaint basis. So if there are police officers out in the field, or when there are police officers out in the field and people, there are individuals that believe that somebody is violating some type of vehicle code, we'd respond to those calls for service just like we do now with existing staff. Finally, our final slide is, again, the same table that you, or the same figures you were presented with at the study session. Should this, again, I want to emphasize, should this program gain some traction and become popular, it's going to be costly. It's only as strong as how it's enforced, it's only as effective as how it's enforced. So we anticipate that we may need some resources to do that. There is a note at the bottom, the city attorney mentioned, to some other options rather than the traditional permit option like you see in San Francisco with the sticker on the bumper, those types of things. There is a license plate reader component to this where, you know, theoretically, and we've seen programs that work pretty well, you would not even have to have a visible permit on your car. It would be associated with your license plate, similar to what a lot of the toll functions do now when we cross our Bay Area bridges. So that technology is out there, it's available. The costs there are listed there. That may alleviate some of the personnel costs, but we won't know until we know the scope and volume of our enforcement effort. And again, it's not only how large an area, but the proximity of where those areas are to one another. Because right now, if we were to do it with existing staff, we'd have to make some difficult choices about where we were going to pull staff away from with our, especially with our time parking enforcement to conduct this new type of enforcement. So I'd be happy to answer any questions now or afterward at the conclusion of the presentation.
So that concludes our presentation. And the action that, again, is requested of the city council is to adopt the residential parking program guidelines, wave first reading and introduce an ordinance regarding amendments to the San Bruno Municipal Code, Section 7.18, for a residential permit parking program.
Okay. Before we bring it back to council, and I'm going to start at the end with Mr. Salazar. Speaker cards, please.
John Bariler.
In this morning's paper, I read, it was the Daily Journal, that there's going to be an exclusion. There are certain people who won't be offered a permit. Is that correct?
John, could you finish and then we'll answer your questions? I'm sorry. I apologize. Can you ask all your questions and then we'll answer them at the end?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
All right. That was one question. Is there an exclusion? And if there is, how do you reconcile that with the 14th Amendment? The people on the east side of El Camino are already wrestling with the 14th Amendment. We've been tagged down there for 20 years for street sweeping, and the people on the west side of El Camino haven't been tagged. And it seems if you're excluding, okay, another question. Okay. Where did the mandate come from? Was it from the public that somebody say, "I want to get a permit so I can park in front of my own house so you can charge me"? Did somebody say that? And how would you coordinate the program, your program, with the street sweeping? It seems there's enough of a mess already. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And then we'll get those answered for you after we hear the speakers.
Dennis Walsh.
Mr. Walsh.
Hello. I have a couple of questions. One, if the time is going to be enforced, will it be a ticket and tow? Or will it be like the existing way that your car has to sit there for 72 hours, then get tagged, and then you have to wait another 72 hours before it gets towed? If that's the case, what's the sense of having the parking enforcement? Someone could go on vacation for a week and still have their car parked there, and I'm still not going to have a spot in front of my own house or in my area. The next question is, if it's not going to be posted on the vehicle, if the vehicle is legal and it's going to be by license plate readers, but police is not going to be enforcing it at the time it's in enforced, an enforceable action, how is someone to know, as the police chief said, for a person to call the cops? How am I going to know if that cop's, the car's legal or not legal if there's nothing on the car? So the person's going to end up sitting there because you don't want a person just running around, "I think that car's wasted the police time and causing a nuisance". Another point is the 9 to 6. You're saying people could park when they get home from work. If I get off work at 5:00, I can get home from Genentech by 9, or by 5:15. I have 45 minutes I have to drive around before I can park in my own area. And another one is, I think part of the parking issues that are around the neighborhoods, especially around apartments and whatnot, is parking spots are allocated, 1.8 cars per apartment. Please show me 1.8 of a car. If it's usually a two-bedroom, there's going to be two cars. Three-bedroom, probably three cars. So maybe whoever the council is or whatever group, when apartments are going in or other residents, they park it based on full cars and based on bedrooms? The other thing is, especially with the apartments near our residents, they're allowed the two spots, but they have to pay for the second one. So the apartment gets money, there are spots in their parking lot that is empty, but my neighborhood, I can't park around my own house. And we never had this parking situation when those apartments were closed. It's only been since they've reopened, and we talked to and raised these issues before, and it went on deaf ears. So maybe whatever group is looking at this, if it's supposed to be 1.8 or two spots per two-bedroom, those are supposed to be part of when you're staying there, not an additional fee because there's that trickle effect out. Well, I think that was my last point.
Thanks, Dennis.
Sandra Perez-Vargas.
Sandra.
Hi. I, for one, have been asking for permit parking for years. We've been asking for any type of parking enforcement for years. I'm so glad we're finally having this meeting because I think in certain areas of San Bruno, it's well overdue. Unfortunately, it took us years to get the attention of the city council with few exceptions. We would have to go out and get 3,000 signatures from residents to impress on you that we needed help. And I still haven't seen the enforced parking. I mean, we still have Huntington Avenue, which is a parking lot for junky trucks. If you cleared that out, and Herman, the whole side of the tracks, it's a bunch of broken-down vehicles. You clear that out, you get space for the city employees who are down there, which we talked about a couple of meetings ago, where you all agreed that something would be done. I've driven by Huntington, still nothing has been done, it seems to me, the same crummy cars. But in the future, you can go to San Bruno now, see what's going on with the residents because louder our voices are, then we have meetings like this where we can have things changed. I mean, this has been, you know, the parking problem has been just all over, and it just took so long to get here. And I think another idea might be, I don't know if the chief of police has looked into this, what about split shifts for the people out there ticketing? And, you know, the evening shifts are great, but you could be more effective if you're doing a morning split and afternoon. That's one way to look at a cutting cost, so you don't have two separate employees. But there's just so much to be done. And another thing to really think twice is to not waive minimum parking requirements like was done by some of you at the aperture apartments. We are in an area where we're desperate for any parking to waive that, just cut our throats. So this is a start, and I'm glad we're finally here. Thank you, Stephen Seymour, Russell Steins, and everybody who walked all these corners of San Bruno to get your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Okay. I see, I'm being told there's no other speaker cards, so with that, we'll close speakers and we'll bring it to council, and we'll start with Mr. ... Okay. Okay. This will be the last speaker because we need to have the speaker card. Okay, this is be the last speaker, because we need to have the speaker cards, just so, because I don't want to overlook anyone, but, okay, please.
Sorry. I've been speaking to Mr. Medina earlier about this. Living in San Bruno, my family's been in San Bruno for 100 years. And it's been, when my great uncle built that house, he never anticipated this, I know he didn't. We have, in my family right now, I have two sisters and a nephew who's 30, and we all have cars. Plus, my sister has a vehicle for work. Around our neighborhood, there have been numerous new construction that's been put in, additional bedrooms in homes that are there, that additional cars have been added to that neighborhood. It is nothing but traffic. We get the Uber drivers, we get the Lyft drivers, who are very vocal when they tell us that they don't have to move, when we want to park in front of our own homes. Right now, to get a permit for us, we would only be able to have two permits for our home. What's that, what good's that going to do for some people? What's that going to do? The police are going to come around, and they're going to ticket the people that don't have the permits? Because they can't, because they can't, because they're not, they're not allowed to have as many permits as they can? And I know that's not, that's not the problem. But in the neighborhoods, in their east of the trucks, as they used to call us all the time, that there's an overabundance of work vehicles, pleasure vehicles, there's boats on the street, there's junky trucks, there's everything that's there, but nobody's done anything about it. We need, we need something there to clean up the street, and we need someone that's out there really walking it. And I know, Mr. Medina, I'm going to be looking for you, when you tell me you walk the neighborhood. I'm going to be looking for that, because it's just, it's not fair for those of us who have been there for a long time. And we have a right to our streets, we really do. I think everybody is allowed to it. But it's true, what Mr. Bariler had said also, with the street cleaning. It's, we play, we play round robin all the time, every other week. So there's got to be something done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to, we're done with speakers now, and we're going to bring it back to the council, and we're going to begin at far end, if I could, Mr. Salazar, and we'll work our way down.
And there's no doubt that if we were going to design the city today, it would look a lot different than the way it does. But we're kind of stuck with what we have. And this program, I know it took, it took many years to put together. It took a lot of sessions, a lot of public input. We've been talking about it for a long time, but I think it is important to do it right. And as long as it's taken, and as much effort has gone into it, I know it's not going to be perfect, and it's not going to work for every neighborhood, but it is a tool that we now can add to our toolbox to help address some of the issues that the neighborhoods are experiencing. You know, I'm definitely in favor of doing something, because it's definitely gotten past the point of doing nothing at all about the problem, and we're only going to increase in density. There's more development coming. And I know some people aren't in favor of that, but it's, it's the future. I mean, we're seeing it all over the peninsula, all over the county, all over the state. And so this will give us something that will give us a little bit of protection in the neighborhood, so I'm definitely in favor of it. I had concerns, as I stated last time, about the complexity, about trying to get the requisite number of essentially votes from the neighborhood to get something started, but it is important that we have a majority, and that everybody in the neighborhood is heard. And there are people that legitimately need more space on the street, and sadly, that's part of the problem. So I think giving the neighborhoods an option to find a solution that works for them is definitely the way to go. This is not something that we want to impose on neighborhoods, but we want to give the neighborhoods that tool. So because of that, I'm willing to give this process a try, and seeing how it works out, and hopefully it's not going to be too onerous for the neighborhoods that need the relief. And if it is, then I'm sure we can come back at some point and make some adjustments. But for now, it does seem like the best possible solution, based on what we have. So that's it for me.
Irene, and then I'm going to ask staff to respond to some of the questions from the public.
Thank you. I'd just like to say something. Yes, people did a petition. Yes, people came many times to council meetings and told us about their parking problems. It's not that we didn't know there were parking problems. Some of us live there. My parents still have their home in the avenues. We know about the parking problems. What we didn't know is how to solve them. And some of you just now said that it's not a parking permit program that we've outlined isn't going to solve your particular problem. And that's, that's where we came into a conundrum. Some of those houses I know have little tiny garages, short driveways, you can't really park your cars in there. You have to park them on the street. And as someone's, as one of the residents said, nobody anticipated this. Those houses that were built in that, especially in the heart area, you know, some of them have no garages. They were summer homes for San Francisco people who were escaping the smog and the fog. I guess it was the fog at that time. Anyway, it's not that we ignored it, it's not that we didn't want to fix it, it's not that we took years just to sit around on our hands and not pay attention to the residents. We all experienced it, we all know about it, we all, we're just trying to find solutions to it. And even now, as someone said, this is not a solution, this is a solution, it's a piece of the toolbox, it is not the silver bullet that's going to fix everything for everybody. So, and remember, if you don't think it's going to work in your neighborhood, you don't have to vote for it. It has to be within your neighborhood, and a majority, sixths, I forget, percent of the people who live there have to vote for it.
And I apologize to the public, but let me go back to some of the questions that were asked by members of the public. One was in regards to the exclusion, that there were some things that were excluded, and then about the concern about the Fourteenth Amendment.
So as proposed, should a neighborhood elect a residential parking program, and that be confirmed by the city council? There is no plan to exclude anyone based on unit type or any other factor. We cannot discriminate against people that live in homes with driveways, people that live in homes without driveways, people that live in apartments. Any program that the city develops guidelines for has to treat all residents equally. They're, based on the boundary, yes, certain areas would be excluded, but it would be a zone boundary as defined by the process, and the process has a component where staff would do an analysis of the neighborhood and offer guidance on the boundaries of the zone.
And I know there was also about the coordination with street sweeping. So the proposed times are 6:00 PM to 9:00 AM for enforcement. Street sweeping begins at 9:00 AM, and, at least on my street, and it concludes at 11:00 AM. So to me, that would not overlap.
That's correct.
Okay. And I think the question was, did somebody come forward and mandate or ask of this? Yes, there have been people, and we've been meeting with this, two years, two years or so, with TSPC and that, so there has been. Going on to Dennis's question, in regards to, is this a ticket and tow, chief? Or what would be the process, other than we know there'd be a ticket, and then let's say the vehicle's still there, for example?
It's our towing process. The 72-hour rule is based on state law, and it's intended to address abandoned vehicle issues. And we publish a quarterly newsletter that's on our, all of our social media sites, and you can see that we process thousands of those complaints every month. But, and I'll yield to the city attorney if he, if he has any exception with my explanation, but the 72-hour requirement is state law, and we have to abide by state law in order to impact those. So that's, we can't just take people's vehicles indiscriminately, we have to, we have to follow the law.
What you're saying is we can't supersede state law?
Yeah, that's theft.
We'll be in trouble.
Yeah, what's the point of...
But it's, but it's state law, so there's nothing we can do differently.
Then why have permits?
Okay. I just, we were answering your question. The, the, yes. Excuse me, hold on, Dennis, Dennis.
I think, I think it's two different questions. So if the car is there, and it doesn't have the permit, it gets a ticket. The next day, it's still there, it gets another ticket. The next day, the third day, it gets a ticket. And then the question to the chief would be, on that third day, does the car get towed?
No.
On the fourth day?
No.
So you say the same?
No, so you're, based on your scenario, absolutely not. Because I have to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that the car's been there for 72 continuous hours. So if you park, if you park your vehicle there at 7:00 PM, and you get a ticket, and then we come back the following evening, and your car's still there at 7:00 PM, by law, we have to show that we've marked that vehicle, we've issued a warning to that vehicle. So we'd have to literally issue a warning to every vehicle that we sighted, and we'd basically be affixing stickers to every, every vehicle. So there are requirements that we have to follow in order to show that it's been 72 continuous hours, that the car has not moved more than a tenth of a mile.
But they would have four tickets on the window.
That's true.
On the, so on the fourth ticket on the window, wouldn't that be proof that they were there for 72 hours?
There's more, that does not meet the legal standard of, we'd have to, we'd have to mark, we'd have to mark the car, we'd have to put a notice, a 72-hour notice on it. So that would require for us to put a 72-hour notice on pretty much every car that we ticketed.
All right, so by the seventh day, it would get towed?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, no, I mean...
I mean, it's going to get towed, it's going to cost a lot of money to be there.
So I think, I think what we're doing is, we're, I realize this is a, this is a subject that people feel strongly about, and I will tell you that we, that we, our investment into parking enforcement is lean in the city, and I think per employee, we're much more productive than anybody else around, as far as how we manage and process what are abandoned vehicle calls, which these are. There are two ways, two ways in which we address abandoned vehicles. One is we get a complaint from someone saying, hey, this car's been here, and it hasn't moved. We go there and we mark the car, and then we, if it's, if it's an older car, we can read the odometer. If not, we have little ways to mark it, that we, if we ever get challenged, this is a litigious process that we deal with, and there's some Fourth Amendment issues that we have to abide by. And then we come back 72 hours later, if the car's still there, we tow it away. The other is, if a car looks like it's been abandoned, if it's dust, if there's weed, if there's garbage, trash is collected around it, if it looks like it hasn't been moved in a long time, then we will mark the car. That may take a couple, or it may take some time for us to realize that, because we can drive around the neighborhoods and not know that cars haven't been moved. I like to, you know, I used to work, I used to be a graveyard patrol police officer, and I'd work every night. And every night, I'd drive through the same neighborhoods, and the same cars were parked in the same place every night. Because when I went home in the morning, everybody went to work, and they were working while I was sleeping, and they came back, and their cars ended up in the same place every night. So I saw, I saw every vehicle in the same place every night. And by that rationale, I'd say, oh, well, the car's there every night, it hasn't moved. So we have, we have to show, you know, beyond any doubt, that that car has been there for 72 hours. Most of the time, it's due to complaints. Occasionally, it'll be obvious to us that, hey, this car hasn't moved, and then we'll go ahead and mark it. So it's, it's not that, hey, there's three tickets on the car, we can automatically tow it. We do have to post a notice, we have to follow the 72-hour process to give those folks the opportunity to move the car.
And it's no different than it is now with street sweeping. So they go by, they ticket it, doesn't mean they're going to tow it. It's not a tow and tick, where I live. I mean, that car could be there another seven days. And then it's been marked, and then it's eventually towed, so that's...
Yeah, there's some very strict guidelines, and I can, the city attorney's probably more of an expert on this than I am, but we are very conscientious about how and when we tow cars, because we're, there's some liability associated with that. And we open up the city to some, some, some pretty, you know, some pretty open holes there, if we just start towing cars beyond our authority.
Well, I've got lights going on over, the city manager, city attorney...
Who wants to take the tough question? So I think there's a misconception out there, that as soon as somebody gets a ticket, that the car can be towed, and I think that's obvious from, from the comments, and I think it's obvious from what the police chief says, that that's not consistent with California law. Cities do not do that, they, they can't do it, and if they did do it, they would, they would be sued. And in fact, cities have been sued, and you've probably read in the newspaper about cases which talk about premature towing of cars. And there is a number of bills in the legislature now, we talked about this at the last meeting, I think many of members of the public. We're here when, when we did, but I'll repeat it for those of you that weren't. There are bills in the legislature that seek to limit the ability of cities to tow cars for 72 hours, for expired registration, for abandoned vehicles, and for all kinds of other things. Because the general notion at the state legislature is that people of moderate means are being penalized in their lives by virtue of their cars being towed. And so you might accumulate five parking tickets under current state law, well, maybe we can tow your car. The state legislature may think otherwise, and they may think that what that does is penalize people who can't afford to pay their parking tickets, and therefore now the car's being removed, they have to pay thousands of dollars to get it back, and so they can't go to work. So then they lose their job, so then they lose their medical care. These are the cascade of events that your legislators in Sacramento are considering, when they're talking about reducing the ability of cities to tow cars that are parked for what legislators consider to be minor traffic infractions. So the city is doing the best it can to review a program, enforce a program, but do so consistent with, with state law and with what we anticipate state law is going to be, because there are a lot of people out there who don't want their cars towed. And there are a lot of lawyers out there who will represent people who don't want their cars towed. And cities are seeing the results of that litigation, unfortunately. And it's, it's very expensive, but there's, the chief said, there are Fourth Amendment violations, it's a constitutional violation. The city can be liable for, you know, large, large damage awards, and paying the attorney's fees of the attorneys who represent the individuals who are suing. So for one tow, might cost $1,000 to get the car back, you might end up paying a six-figure settlement. So these are the things that the city does have to work within, and if you don't like what the state legislature is doing, I would encourage all of you to go to Sacramento and tell them that, because they are reducing the ability of cities to, to take enforcement action.
And the only thing I would add to that is, the way we manage and process abandoned vehicles, and that's what the law calls them, abandoned vehicles, is not unique. We do it the same as every other police agency in the state, just so we make sure that we don't open ourselves to the liability that the city attorney mentioned.
City manager.
Sure. I just want to say two things. The 72-hour abandoned vehicle law is totally separate from a residential parking program and any ticket that's given under a residential parking program. And so I just, I just want to make that clear. And the other thing I want to say, because it was mentioned, is a residential parking program does not guarantee you a spot to park on the street. What a residential parking program does, it regulates who can park on the street, and attempts to limit the number of people who can park on the street. And so, yes, should a program be adopted, under the proposed structure, the first permit would be free, the second permit would cost $50. But it is no guarantee that you would be able to park in that zone or in front of your house. And I think there's sometimes a misnomer about that, so I wanted to make that clear.
Okay. And I think there was the, also the question of, if it were electronic, and it wasn't a visible tag, then in essence, a person who may not be as familiar with the neighborhood or those, then, then how would one know to report it? Or not?
Sure. And so the precise mechanism of the permit has not been decided. When we talk electronic, we are either talking about some sort of transponder, or the program being a LPR, license plate reader-based program. There's also the option to have a printed permit. There are pros and cons of all of them. Some are more efficient, some are more labor-intensive for people to get the permit and then renew it once it expires. But the specific question that was mentioned was, well, if there is not a physical permit, how do I know that that car is able to park in my neighborhood or in this zone? If there is not a physical permit, that would be one con, is that a resident may not know. You could also say that if a resident sees a car that's not moving, they can call the police and report that. So yes, if there's not a physical permit, that would take that ability away from a resident to sort of be scanning cars or see your car and call and report it. But we would be having enforcement. Again, it wouldn't occur throughout the night, but it would occur during the period. And a non-physical ticket or an LPR or a transponder makes that enforcement a lot more efficient, so we can cover a wider area, at a lower operating cost, and potentially have a better result. And so there are just pros and cons of all the models.
Okay. And then one of the, I think one of the last questions that I'd asked, too, was, okay, it's listed as 6:00 PM to 9:00 AM, however, I get home at 5:15, and already there's a challenge. So how did we come up with maybe that time element?
So what I would say is, there is no perfect science around the time. We went back and forth with staff as we were analyzing it, and there was a survey done by staff in 2018, when they went and assessed a number of neighborhoods. But the reason why it is 6:00, not 5:00, is in neighborhoods that have commercial activities, those commercial activities, or an employee of that commercial business may still, may still be there around 5:00 or 5:30. And most residents would likely be arriving home... uh, and most residents, um, would likely be arriving home about six o'clock, or, and that's when sort of the critical mass of the parking being, uh, consumed within the neighborhood would occur, is in that six o'clock area. The other thing, uh, or, or beginning at six o'clock, the other thing that we talked a lot about is frankly, the enforcement cost. The more hours that it, that it's in, in effect, the more hours we would have to enforce it. Um, and so we felt that really addressing the evening throughout the night and into the morning was the most ideal time. Uh, but should council decide, desire to change that, uh, we could.
Thank you. Um, Irene, were you included?
I'm-
Okay, I'm sorry. Laura?
Um-
Mike?
Can you go back to slide five in your presentation? Oh, maybe it's four, sorry. So I think your plaque on the bottom right corner is the confusing piece, right? So it says, "Warning: Parking Permit. Vehicles without valid permits will be towed at owner's expense." And that's really probably not what we're promoting, it's like, you're gonna get ticketed. I mean, the parking permit program is about ticketing vehicles, and, and I think like we, it took us a while to get there, but I think what we're saying is, towing a vehicle is really about abandoned vehicles, right? Those vehicles that are stolen for robberies and then left abandoned somewhere else, or a vehicle that's just simply abandoned, not working and throwing weeds underneath the tires. So, is really that the, is that, is that what we wanna, maybe that's the confusing, it's confused me, I'm kinda, I was stumbling along this process as well.
So, uh, yes. Um, the seventy-two-hour abandoned vehicle rule, uh, where vehicles are towed, um, is distinctly different from the permit parking sign, and the typical permit parking sign has a letter or a, uh, number that flags the, the zone that you're in with a citation of the municipal code.
So, and I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Davis, if I could just add to that, I think that the depiction is similar to the signs that exist on private property. So the rules for private property are different. So if I park in violation of a sign on private property, uh, that property owner can call up the tow company and have my car towed in five minutes, that's, that's not a violation of any state law. When the city does it, it's different, because the private property owner isn't subject to the Constitution or the Fourth Amendment, whereas the city is subject to the Constitution and the Fourth Amendment against unreasonable searches and seizures. And the courts have said that towing cars is a seizure that is a violation of the Fourth Amendment unless it's done with due process. That's the due process that the chief explained.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, I also wanted to say that, you know, thank you to the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee, I know there's, uh, I see a member here, and I know there are a number of members that have been part of that, and you guys, I mean, long meetings, long discussions, this has been going on for a long time, um, as well as the council subcommittee and staff for getting to this point. You know, it, everybody that I know and talk to is addressing their concerns with parking in their neighborhoods. There's not a single neighborhood, there's not a single person I know that's not complaining about parking in their neighborhoods. And, you know, people wanna think that it's a problem on the east side, well, it's just a problem in other parts of San Bruno as it is on the east side. There are a lot of apartment complexes that add to the point. Um, a comment was made earlier about, you know, i- if I move into an apartment complex and they require two parkings per, per a two-bedroom apartment, am I paying extra to get the two parking? Um, I think I've asked that question before, I know Shelter Creek became a big issue with a lot of residents, I mean, the amount of cars overflowing in the neighborhood has doubled in size in the last several years than it ever used to be. Um, they're dr, they're parking down Genovin, and I never saw that before. Um, and yet, you drive through the parking lots at Shelter Creek and you, maybe I'm just driving through at the wrong time looking, but the parking stalls are, you know, are not full, so you wonder, are they parking on the street instead of, and not paying the additional fee? So I have some concerns with that as well, and I don't know if staff has ever had an opportunity pressing these larger complexes, what was the original agreement, and what, what are they really doing on site? Um, and that's something maybe we can, we can try to improve, parking issues. Um, I also know that whether you're retired or working full-time, or you're a twenty-five-year-old, everybody cares who's parking in the neighborhood. I've got a son who's twenty-five that said, who's that car, and where do they come, and they don't belong here, and who, where are they walking to, and what are they doing? And, you know, we, as residents, um, care about our neighborhoods. Um, and, and if it wasn't for our due diligence, you know, I wouldn't have known, um, or the police department would have known that there was a grow house next door to me. Um, and we worry about that, and so, you know, when they're coming in and they're buying drugs, is it, you know, it, you, you worry about these things, when you see cars you don't recognize, and cars are parked around for too long, and, and oddities that happen in your neighborhood. Um, you know, there's a lot of crazy things that happen today. So I, I appreciate the, the residents, their due diligence, to care about what's going on in their neighborhoods and to report that things. So I have some concerns where you've put the, forth the effort on a, on a parking permit program, but yet you don't know if that person has a parking permit. So I think that that takes a lot of power away from the resident, or at least the feeling of, you know, we're trying to control our neighborhood, and we actually wanna be able to come home and park in our neighborhood at the end of the day. I also know that a lot of residents can help the situation, right? They too have abandoned cars, or maybe they have cars that aren't working in their parking garage, or they're not utilizing parking garages, or they're not utilizing their driveways, or they have too many cars, they've got cars that maybe they should donate, or cars that they should sell. Um, you know, it's really, it's a, it's a community effort, it's not, it's not one group of people that have brought us here today. Um, I appreciate the, the work that the San Bruno Now folks have done, but they're not the only group of people who have complained. There have been a number of other people who've complained, and every council member up here today has made issues about it, and we made it a council priority to staff to get us to this point. Unfortunately, sometimes we look at council priorities, and there are a lot of them, and you can't, you can't get them all on a calendar year to address, because there are more pressing issues in our city. And unfortunately, we've had a lot of pressing issues in the city. So I'm happy to be here where we are today, um, and I, it might not be the perfect solution, I think, uh, Councilmember O'Connell said this earlier, you know, it took a long time to get to where we're at, it might not be a perfect solution, um, so council might have to make some minor changes as we work through the process. Um, the only other question I have is, um, going back to the flow chart, um, what happens and how long does, does somebody have to submit the, in step, going from step five, so staff sends out the survey to the residents to determine the support for the program, when we get the fifty percent response rate of at least sixty-seven percent, what's that window of time before you can say, we're not, we're not getting it? Is it open and, and, is it, and, I mean, is there a period of time where in ninety days, you've gotta get a fifty percent response, and of that fifty percent response, you've gotta get a sixty-seven percent yes? Or, I wasn't, I think I'm not clear there?
Oh, sorry. Um, there is a deadline that the city will, will place in the letters, that's-
Perfect.
-with the surveys that will be sent to the residents, so that we should get all the responses by that date, and then we'll determine whether it meets the requirements or not.
Perfect. Okay, good. Um, other than that, thank you for the, the due diligence the staff has put toward this program and getting us to the point, I'm excited to, um, see it move forward.
And then, uh, we're gonna go to Marty, and Marty, if you, if I can, I was gonna just, there, I had received an email today, and so I just wanted, uh, it's, uh, from a person named Robin, won't go where they live, but, um, but the comments, uh, were that, and I'll use their words, parking stinks. Parking permits, they, they believe should be more mandatory than voluntary. Um, has a neighbor that at one time had nine cars, but now they're down to six. So, and their, their part of it was that, you know, that might be challenging, had suggested there should be three per household, um, the third one costing three hundred dollars, uh, due to if people have additional vehicles, and that should be considered because of a college student, or maybe they have a commercial vehicle in addition to their personal vehicle. So, uh, just to clarify for that, it was about inventory, is that if we kept allowing more, then we still didn't defeat the, the situation that arose, as for example, nine cars. Well, it was hoped that if they have a garage or they have a long driveway, that they're utilizing those. Um, and again, as I've indicated, um, I wanted to lead by example, so I had a very mature car, I'll call it, and I donated it to the veterans. So it's about leading by example, I can't drive two cars at once, so I stepped it up and donated it to make it simple and easy, but I think it's to hope that if they're not being utilized, you either store them, if there's some classic cars, I've heard some great stories about, you know what, they have six cars and they're beautiful. Well, maybe you wanna put them over a little shelter, too, or somewhere. So, but I did wanna acknowledge that email that was received this afternoon, and just have it in, into that, to their comments. Marty?
Thank you. Um, clearly, our city wasn't built for the amount of cars that currently are here, and the number of cars keep on going up. Um, this took a lot of time. It's complicated. I was on that subcommittee working with TSPC, and we bounced back and forth on how to proceed. Um, this program is not perfect, there is no guarantee that you'll have a spot, but we clearly had to do something, and this is what we're working with right now. Remember, it's voluntary for your street. That does bring up a question I have for staff and for my colleagues here, is, is how difficult it's gonna get, it will be for sixty-seven percent of people to agree to anything, really, when you think about it. Um, I think that number, and I'd like to maybe discuss why that number is so high, and is that what the other cities are using, or, I would think something lower, um, would be more appropriate. It takes fifty, fifty, fifty percent plus one to raise taxes. It takes a supermajority to change something very significant in the law. But this, I think we may have a bar that's set very high, and what happens if we're at sixty-three percent? You know, but fifty percent is, I think we kinda all agree that that's kinda how it normally works in your house, or in many other areas, but I also understand fifty-five may be, well, you know, people are gonna change their mind, but it seems to me that sixty-seven is pretty high.
Uh, well, hold on.
And I, I will, go ahead.
No, I, I, I was just gonna comment, because being another one that was on the, uh, long subcommittee with, uh, Mark Howard and Tom Hamilton, who's in the audience, who's now on the planning commission, uh, that was something we discussed at the committee level, subcommittee level for a year? Too long? I'll give you that one. Too long, and our concurrence would step forward, which we went to the T, TSPC, which was our recommendation, was sixty-seven. When I say ours, our concurrence was the four of us said sixty-seven. In July eighteenth, I believe, we met here, and my memory is that, that, 'cause I think staff, first of all, I wanna, first segue to say, I appreciate the council, 'cause I think on the study session, we really took the points, and we really went through whether it was compromising on the ten, or the seven, or the six, and everybody came to a consensus on each item, which I appreciate, the collaboration and the cooperation. But at no point was that mentioned, um, as far as asking staff to change that, uh, at that point. So, uh, I, I appreciate that, but I wanted to, to clarify too, how we got, when you say, how did we get there? In addition, my understanding too is when other, a couple other survey, cities were surveyed, they had similar, and that's how we, remember Mark had taken the platelet from other communities who had that threshold to ensure that it wasn't a, you know, a simple thing, but it was, those respondents were fully wanting that imposed upon them by their doing, and Mark Howard would always say, um, I'm not in favor of having anything imposed, uh, on folks. We just heard a speaker about street sweeping, they feel they're imposed. I have street sweeping, I know it goes back to nineteen-eighty-two, when that got established. So, I was young then, but, but that is, if you look in the history. So, anyway, um, just a side note, but anyway, Laura?
So, um, have, I have some, a similar concern as well, and I started looking at numbers, right? So let's just say, for example, you've got two hundred residents, right? You only need fifty percent, so you only need a hundred of those residents to actually re, respond, and then you only need sixty-seven to say yes. So really, out of your two hundred, two hundred residents, you only needed sixty-seven to say yes. So we kinda look at it that way as well. It's not really sixty-seven percent of all of them, it's only, it's sixty-seven percent of the fifty percent, right? That respond. So, you know, my other suggestion would be, you know, I, it's, nothing is ever gonna be perfect, and I think because there was so much discussion earlier, maybe in, in the subcommittees, that you move forward with the program, and if we need to make adjustments as we move forward, then we'll definitely see the need.
No, I, I agree, and, and it's just, I was, the more you think about it, the more I was thinking about it of, of that sixty-seven percent, I was thinking, that's a kind of a high number, but we didn't talk about that, and, um, I wanted to share that opportunity to hear from my colleagues. I know it's better than nothing, right? Because it's, the, the parking's only getting worse, um, at least for people I, I speak with, and it, and it is on both sides of the street, out of the tracks. On El Camino, there's Linden Poplar Elm, the hundred and two-hundred block, it's, it's, you drive down that street, you, you can't no longer pull over to allow a car to pass by parking, by pulling over to the driveway, 'cause there's already a car parked there. So, um, I also agree about the, Laura, about the apartment complexes, of finding out how are they properly managing, um, their parking spaces, and are they charging more, are they allowed to charge more for those spaces? And, um, again, it, it's, it's a voluntary program, and, and I'm, I'm glad we're at least to this point now to, to make a difference of, of, uh, for some people that want to do it.
Fair. Um, and again, I, I do wanna thank Tom, 'cause you're sitting here, and Tom not only sat through the meetings, uh, as far as the subcommittee, and of course, Michael Cato, who's here as well, you didn't, had to hear and, and go through these. Tom also was kind enough, as Marty and I know, he would go ahead and take everything, put it in a nice PowerPoint, uh, that, so he did a lot of, a lot of work into the evening. And Mark Howard, who's moved out of state, and as I indicated, it's not 'cause of the parking, it's because he retired, and now he, uh, lives out of state. Uh, and then, of course, Marty and I, uh, served on it, and it was a long time, and I think it was a matter of, we realized too, we're not going to make it all perfect, and we're not gonna make everyone happy, and we're not going to, it doesn't guarantee that when I go home tonight, if it existed, that I would be able to park technically in front of my home. I know that. I think the other thing too, is I started to think that the free, first free was maybe not good, but I hadn't, didn't bring it up then, but I wanna reaffirm that I think it is good. Um, there are people, and, uh, we, we all know some, and I can tell you, near my home, there is a house that sold just not too long ago, and it has no driveway, it has no garage. So, uh, but that's how it was built, can't change that. And so in essence, to have that homeowner now buy a home and wanna park on the street to say, now I bought this home, I'm sure they're paying more, um, property tax than I do, and, um, now I have to pay to park. So I do concur that I think the first free and the second at fifty is, is good, and I only wanna reemphasize that it is a voluntary opt-in program. On National Night Out, I heard from a resident, and I heard a resident, um, at a, uh, over at Saint Roberts that said, you know, n, thanks, guys, and then we're talking about the five of us, by the way, um, I now have to, I have to pay to park in front of my house, that, and that's not the case. So I wanna reaffirm, it is not that anything changes unless the neighborhood chooses that, steps forward and wants that. So it is not being imposed, it does not mean mandated, um, it is a question at this time whether the need is desired, and it gives you a tool and an option in which to make change, if that's what you wish. And that's what we're trying to do here tonight. So I wanna thank, again, the council, really, I thought the July study session was great, and I thought we all worked very well together to come up to tonight. So with that said, is there any more questions or comments in regards to it? We do have an action item, uh, we would need a motion and second to waive the first reading.
Um, Mayor Medina, I do wanna clarify-
Yes.
-the staff report title is different than the agenda title, so I just wanna read for the record the staff report title-
Thank you.
...'cause there is a resolution. It's to adopt a resolution approving residential permit parking program guidelines, waive the first reading, and introduce an ordinance regarding amendments to San Bruno Municipal Code, Chapter seven point one-eight, residential permit parking. So we will need two motions to adopt the resolution, and then a separate one that will introduce the ordinance, uh, waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance.
So we do need a waive the first reading and a second. We wanna take that, is that okay, take that first? Okay. So do we have anyone?
So moved.
To waive the first reading.
Yes.
To waive the first-
Second.
Uh, motion made, and second, and to waive the first reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. So now we also have the introduction of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Melissa?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I do want to also thank staff for their time, because, and Public Works, Michael, Jimmy, Ed, all of you, Mark, Melissa, Javon. There is a list of people who have been touching this, working with this over the time, and so I appreciate that very much.
And there's one, there's one more motion to adopt the resolution approving the residential...
Here, I'm thanking people, we're not even, this hasn't even taken effect yet.
So there's one more motion to adopt the resolution.
I move that we approve the resolution.
Second.
Melissa.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye, and what I said doesn't change. So, anyway, with that, that will end that conduct of business. Thank you very much.